Welcome to the December 19th, 2018 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since six o'clock discussing an individual personnel matter and a tenure recommendation. And can we stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can we have introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Willow Bear.
Jody Monroe.
Michael Cooper.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Christine Beck.
And Judy Keigho.
And Meredith Moriarty is not here this evening. She had a prior commitment. Do we have any picked students here? Okay. Your obligation is to stay until nine o'clock or until the meeting ends. If we go to nine o'clock, we'll take a break so you can come up and sign out. Okay. And I wanted to thank Ms. Heffernan and the staff here at Glenmont for welcoming us, and especially right before the holidays. That's very brave of you. But everything's been terrific, so thank you. First up is approval of the minutes of the December 5th, 2018 regular board meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Is there anyone here from the Student Senate? Okay.
Hi, I'm PJ Namkin, Vice President of Student Senate. We just finished our yearly holiday food drive, and it was super successful. We packed over 200 boxes. So each family got to take home three boxes, actually. So last year they only got to take home two, so it was nice. And we had 40 boxes of food left over, and so we took all of that and put it into our backpack program. So it was nice when I have to go shopping for a while. We have a little extra. And we're going to start planning our annual snowball dance, which is going to be in the middle of February. And we have a couple of clubs being approved and that type of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to PJ. He got accepted to Emerson, so PJ, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Sure. I'd like to follow up on what PJ had said. We did provide nearly 100 district families with holiday packages of food and gift cards. It was spearheaded by the High School Student Senate, and the district's annual effort was really successful. It was a combined effort, students, faculty, staff, administration. It's really a great event with our local businesses and communities partnering with us. I'd like to also thank Kathy Johnson and the Special Education Department. They are kind of the go-to people for questions for families, and it really is a great event every year, so I'd like to thank everyone involved. Also, at the last board meeting, we had a presentation on our health curriculum, and we spoke about the issue of consent and sexual harassment particularly. And I was actually invited in by Coach Douglas to observe a lesson on digital respect following that, and I thought it was very interesting. All of our varsity boys' coaches are utilizing a program developed by Equinox called Futures Without Violence, Coaching Boys Into Men Program. And it's really aimed at teaching young men about sexual harassment and consent. And the lesson, none of the, the boys didn't know I was coming, so when I walked in, they were a little bit taken aback, but it didn't, it didn't, you know, prevent any conversation from happening. And the goal is to try it out during the winter with the varsity athletes, and then to extend that to modified programs in the future. And then also, I guess they are developing a program for female athletes as well for next year, so we'll see how it goes. And the goal would be really to get some of the varsity athletes to act as mentors or trainers for underclassmen. So it was a really interesting lesson. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up was the, we had several emails about therapy dogs in our policy. And just to clarify that, with the therapy dogs, we do, we changed our policy a couple different times. It goes on the Policy Committee. And the last version was what our attorneys recommended, where anyone who brings a therapy dog into the building, it's about a half-page application. They fill out their name and their dog's name, and then they're required to give us proof of the vaccinations and their certification. The issue that a few people have raised is the liability, that an owner can't accept liability for their dog. And in looking, I went back to our policy and our notes from our attorneys when we did that, we're essentially asking the owner to take responsibility for their dog when they're on our campus. If they are covered under liability insurance through Therapy Dogs International, I don't see that as any different than any other group for a person who's using our facility. We don't necessarily care who they use for their insurance, but that they have it. So I'm not really sure what the big concern is. We do have about half a dozen people who have completed the application and haven't raised an issue.
I have a couple of questions on that. Last year, we allowed them to come at the end of the year without having to provide that information.
Because we were...
In the midst of changing the policy.
Changing the policy.
Yep. My question, I guess, is can we have them produce it once a year? Do they need to produce it for the same dog every time?
Once a year, they have to fill it out.
Could we have somebody available when they come in to just, like, check their credentials when they come in and say, or does it have to be done a certain amount of time in advance? Like, what is our requirement?
Just have to give it to us before they bring the dog on campus. My concern with the group, like, one group comes in for exams. Then we got another email saying, I think Glenma asked the group to come in. So how do, you know, to have someone on site to be checking that seems more of a problem than just having them fill out a half a page of information and have us just have it on file. It's essentially good for one year. So they would, if they want to bring a therapy dog on campus, they would fill that out once a year, and then when their certification expired, give us a new application the following year.
So they just have to provide proof of immunization, proof that the dog's certified, that they have the appropriate insurance, or is the TDI certification enough because we know they're covered under TDI, or?
Yeah, the TD, I can't remember. Do they have to have insurance?
They have liability insurance through TDI.
Right. And there's probably several layers. There's probably TDI, their homeowners, before we even get to us. So liability, I'm not too concerned about, but...
There's just a statement on the form that says they are responsible for their dog.
Responsible, right. So we're just holding them hostage.
And how, if something were to happen, how they would deal with that financially is their issue. It's not ours, but we just want to make sure that we're covered in terms of who's responsible.
So if they want to come to Glenmont, but they filed something at the high school...
We have, all of it goes to district office, so we have it on file.
Okay. So it doesn't seem that cumbersome to have them fill out a form, and some have been willing to do it that are part of the group that come in and...
We can email it to anyone. They can email it back. It's, I don't see it as...
It's not something they have to come in and present.
No.
They can call and scan it.
They can call and scan it.
Once a year.
Once a year.
I mean, if you take your dog to PetSmart and have them groomed, you have to provide, not the liability, but you have to provide immunization and everything else. So I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask that.
I would just be curious, like, if other suburban schools are having similar questions or issues, or if our policy isn't in line with them, you know? Because what these trainers do is, therapy dogs do is great, you know? But I also feel personally that, you know, my job as the school board is also to, you know, you know, protect the safety and the well-being and the financial interest of the district as well. So it's, I do want to balance those things. But I'd also be very curious to see what other districts are doing in terms of this policy.
I don't know that many districts actually have a policy yet, although I know that it's been discussed the last year more frequently, so I'm guessing they probably will develop policies. A lot of them have staff members who bring in their own therapy dogs. We have two staff members who filled out the application and bring them in.
And the other thing I just wasn't sure about, there's no limit on, is there a limit on the number of times that you can come in once you've filled it out?
No.
So if you fill it out one time in September, that means that you can come in, if you wanted to come in once a week through June?
Right.
You could.
Correct.
Okay.
If you're invited, that would match. Not every week.
There's also, with the application, there's also information that we have to notify families as well, that there will be a therapy dog, for example, in your classroom in case there's a student who, you know, has any kind of issue with that, has allergies, so there is a parent notification piece as well.
Usually, the high school has a good turnout during midterms and at the end of the year for finals. The kids, even at the high school level, seem to enjoy it. I'm assuming at the elementary, and I guess I'm going to ask Laura, do the kids seem to enjoy the therapy dogs?
We actually have not been having them at Glenmont.
Okay. We can leave it at that.
Any other questions?
That's it.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Next is the Board of Education report. I was able to attend the Theater Without a Net presentation of Almost Maine, and I'm sure any others on the board were also able to get there. I just wanted to congratulate everybody involved. I thought it was a terrific production, very well done, so congratulations. Do we have a couple?
Yeah. We have Katie and Sarah.
Yeah.
It was great.
Who are trying to hide.
Sorry.
You're trying to hide back there.
Yeah, I'll try to wait. Can you second me? Sorry.
No.
And myself, and Willow, and Chris were able to attend the College Transition Program Scholar Showcase that was held at St. Rose last week. We had a presentation last board meeting about the program, and the three students who were in the program in the fall gave very good presentations on the courses that they were auditing. And I was just amazed at how poised and articulate they were, so I just wanted to commend everybody who's worked on that program. I know it's been a long haul getting here, and I hope that we can continue the program and continue to grow it. That's all I have. Anyone else?
Sure. And the same couple of things that you just did, and I just wanted to say, the theater production was tremendous. It's just, it was really fantastic just to see that, you know, those were student-directed, and they were, you know, they were phenomenal. And it was just neat to see each different scene, and what I loved was how all the scenes tied together, and there was a lot of humor, and I just thought it was incredibly well-done. And then the event at St. Rose, I, that was incredible and truly special. And I think it's such a tremendous program that we're able to offer here, not just because kids get to go to St. Rose and get that, the classroom experience, but even more that they get the experience of, okay, going from class to class, getting to a job, which they had, because they each had jobs in there, learning how to walk, you know, through the community. And these are all these life skills that these kids so desperately need, and to have a program like that is just incredible. And I'm very proud of our district for having that.
John?
I also got to experience Almost Maine, the production, which was absolutely lovely. Also, having watched the theater program for a number of years because my daughter participated in it, the growth of some of the seniors, one of whom is here.
Two.
Two. I'm sorry. Is really phenomenal to see over the period of years, and it's, and, you know, you two are really special, and you should know that. And it was lovely to see, because I had never seen Katie play off against Grant. That was, that was really something that was special. I also got to go to the BOU's Talking to Your Team, which I had never gone to one. I had the conversations with my kids, my wife did too, and this, the world has changed in many ways, and one of the things that they pointed out was that the marijuana of my youth, not that I'm admitting to anything, was much safer than what it is today. And today, it's mixed with fentanyl and other, other drugs that can kill you with one marijuana cigarette, or whatever you would call them now. It was a powerful program, and it's something that I am thrilled that BOU brings to the district, and it's something I would encourage every parent and every student to attend. It's something, it's information that we all need and all should have.
And if anyone was not able to attend, it, I assume it's still up there. They had a...
Yes.
Essentially a recording of the live feed on their Facebook page.
It is, it is available on their Facebook page. Thank you.
Because I actually, I watched it afterwards because I had the privilege of attending a sixth grade music concert, and then I also went to the eighth grade music concert, and they both were fabulous, so I just wanted to congratulate the middle school music faculty and all the kids that did a great job.
So I just wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Prezio for her first production at the high school with Almost Maine. I thought she did a tremendous job, and I was super happy. I didn't know what to expect because I love all my theater kids. I miss them. And it was just a warming story from the beginning to end, and I love, I just, I loved the whole thing, and you guys should be really proud. It was awesome. I did want to bring up, I wasn't here last week. My son had an orchestra performance in Vermont, so I wasn't able to be at the last meeting. But I watched the video on consent and, you know, how we incorporate that into our academic program. And I do have a couple of questions that just, I know we can't get any answers because Mr. Powers isn't here, but I just wanted to bring that up. One for me personally, I don't know if any other board member is interested, but the digital respect presentation, if it's possible that that could be shared with board members who are interested in studying that?
What I could, what might be helpful is after they, some of the coaches go through the program, or maybe even when Mr. Keyes is here as part of the athletic budget presentation, to have a couple of them come, because it's a series, Digital Respect. It was only one of them. I think there's 15 lessons that all center around the topic of sexual harassment, but it might be good to hear from the coaches or even some of the kids about those, if you want.
The other, the other thing I just wanted to talk about was, I think we got on the topic of sexual harassment, but we got away from, from the minutes that I watched, we got away from the actual consent aspect of it and the ages in which we're teaching the program. And, you know, everything that was stated on the video seemed to be more geared towards high school students, and my concern there is health is taken by most students, anywhere from 10th to 12th grade, but there are a lot of 11th graders who take it, which is much too late. I've been hearing stories for a long time. I've had three kids in the school district about incidences that occur, and a lot of it goes to consent and what is starting, stopping, and that didn't seem to come up in the conversation from the minutes that I watched. I know Meredith brought up some questions in regards to requesting consent, and the response was talking about communication, but it didn't really go towards details on being respectful. There was nothing specific that was stated in the meeting. So I just want to make sure, you know, that we're talking about what I think some of the board members seem to be concerned with, clear yeses and no, boundaries aren't the same. They went to talk about, we talk about relationships, what's healthy and what's not healthy, but that's not necessarily the issue that, or the topic that I think the board was trying to get across. It was on consent, what constitutes consent, what doesn't constitute consent. And I know it's a, it's a wide topic, and it can overlap a lot of areas, but what I really want to see or get information on is what is being taught at what level, because it appears that if we're teaching it to 11th and 12th graders, it seems that we're missing the window, because a lot of these incidences occur between 8th and 10th grade. And, you know, from the things that I've heard that have occurred, it is, it is concerning as a parent, as a board member. And I want to make sure for both girls and boys that we're doing all that we can as a district to promote knowledge about consent. And I, and the other thing that they brought up was violence prevention, which, that's great, but it wasn't really going towards the consent topic. So if it's possible to get any information to the board as well on what exactly we teach in 8th grade versus what possibly is taught in 11th grade, and I'm happy that we're doing that with the athletes, but again, that's only targeting, targeting one specific group. And again, we were talking about teaching varsity players, so a lot of times they're not varsity till 11th or 12th grade. So again, we're missing that, that window to really kind of drive it home for both sexes. So I don't know what any of the other board members, if they have an opinion on this, or what their thoughts are, but...
I was interested to see that in the onboard newspaper that we get.
I saw that.
There was a, an article right on the front about, about this issue, and sort of looking again at how we're, we're teaching consent, not even starting in 8th grade, but even younger than that. And there seemed to be some, at least in that particular article, some resources that were referred to. And I wasn't sure if those were things we could pass on to them.
I think I did, but I can double-check.
I agree with you, Christine, and definitely on some of those topics, and thank you for bringing this up. I think, I think a lot of the questions that I had, I answered, but I agree with the consent one, but I think there was just some, I know I left with some questions. You know, I think the question that I would have, and I think I still have, is it seems like we do, it seems like they're doing a good job of, when it comes to consent, talking about the person who's being asked and strategies for them, but what's the other side in terms of the person who's asking and talking about consent with them and, and their responsibilities in the situation? And that was one of the struggles that I had, because it was, you know, I'm sure we talk about, you know, how to say no and what's appropriate, you know, and having the person learn, okay, I need to get out of this situation, but then what are we telling the people that are initiating the situation? And what's their responsibility? And are we doing a good job educating them so we can prevent the situations we've been starting?
And you could say no anytime. I mean, you can start and stop and start and stop, and those discussions we didn't have. So I just want to make sure that we have these discussions and maybe have Mr. Powers come back in, or if we get information as a board as to what specifically we teach on consent in the classroom, just so we can have a further discussion on it or with Jody or Dave.
Would it be possible to get a syllabus of what's being taught?
Yeah, we have that.
Because, sorry, I apologize.
I'm not sure a syllabus is going to really get into...
The specifics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we can, we can follow up with Mr. Powers.
Because the other thing that I do agree with you, Christine, is that it is important to make sure that it is at the 7th and 8th grade level, because that's where, you know, I mean, maybe even more, but definitely those levels are just the basic idea of it, because that's where a lot of this starts, and by the time it's 11th or 12th grade, it may be reactive instead of proactive.
Or, yeah, it's too late to stop certain, certain situations that's already occurred. And within a week's time, I heard of three or four different situations that, oh, well, this happened to this girl two years ago, and, and they were very specific, detailed situations, which should not go overlooked. I mean, yes, it doesn't happen at school necessarily, but we have an opportunity, since it is a very big issue, and when kids are entering college, they're, they're spending hours filling out these health forms, and they actually get very specific as to what constitutes consent. And I think that it, and I felt bad as a parent that this is the first time I've actually have awareness to how specific it got, that I didn't actually have these conversations. And I know, I just want to make sure the administration too, I mean, you obviously have thoughts. We're not here to tell you how to deliver your curriculum, so I want to make sure I'm clear on that. But just to see maybe, and maybe it's not a discussion, obviously, for tonight, but what your thoughts are on it, Jody, Dave, and how we really want to integrate that into the school. You know, it's not just my opinion or the board's opinion, it's like, you know, what position is Bethlehem going to take on delivering consent to our students? And do we feel strongly in it? And how do we move forward to make sure that we integrate it so that all students are getting that information and not a certain cohort? Thank you. That was it.
Anyone else? Next is our presentation for this evening. It's on the Response to Intervention for Behavior Program, and it will be presented by Glenmont Principal Laura Heffernan.
Welcome to the Board of Education, Ms. Monroe, Mr. Hurst, and Ms. Keigho. Tonight, my name is Laura Heffernan, and I'm the principal here at Glenmont School, and I'm presenting with my colleagues here, Laurel Jones, who is our RTI Administrator, and Kristin Connor, our K-12 guidance supervisor, about our RTI, which stands for Response to Intervention Behavior Program at the B.C. Elementary Schools. So first of all, RTI behavior, we have been doing response to intervention with academics, specifically reading and math here at the elementary schools for years. So we have different levels of support depending on how children are doing with their reading and math. If they need extra help, they might go to a reading teacher a few times a week. If they need more, they go a few more times a week in a much smaller group. So we've been doing this with academics, and now we are doing it with behavior. And this, this program is designed to help us identify those students who are at risk and need intervention for their social, emotional, and behavioral needs, and these are the ways that we can, can address that and help them, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight.
So we spent a lot of time on this, years of time, getting ready, because it's a big step to take. So last year was a really big year of planning. We did it with Sue Ischiardo, who got married and is now Sue Dearline, Kristin and I, and all the principals, and we worked to develop a process for seeing our kids. So we are using PBIS, or PEBIS, depending on where you are, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. So the way that this works is it's a team approach. So everyone in the building is on the same page. So we make decisions together, we make decisions based on data, how successful students are being in the classroom, and then we make an individualized plan to meet every student's needs. So we have a short video to show you about PBIS. So we have a short video to show you about PBIS. Now you're going to have that in your head all night, that tune. Hold on. Are we in present mode? No. Okay, hold on, we're almost back. Okay. So it's all about being positive, and we're doing a really good job at it. The first step was to develop three core values and three behavior expectations in the buildings. And all five of the elementary schools are using the same three. They didn't have to, but they chose to. So rule number one is to be kind, number two is to be respectful, and number three is to be responsible. And as you saw in the video, a really big part of this is that we teach these expectations. So we decided what we wanted to see. And this is just a piece here. So at arrival and dismissal, to be kind, you use expected words and behaviors and you stay in your personal space. During arrival and dismissal, to be respectful, you stay to the right and you say hi to everybody. And to be responsible, you walk and you go right to your location, either the classroom or the bus if you're leaving. So we have defined all of the expected behaviors in all different areas of our schools, the cafeteria, the hallways, the classrooms. And now it's consistent, and everybody knows the expectations, which is also very helpful to staff and faculty who might see a child who's not quite making the right choice. And we know that, and we can use these words to talk to them about it. So one of the ways that you roll out your plan is to teach the behaviors to your students. And one of the ways that we did that was making videos. So each school made videos to teach the expected behaviors to their students. So let's show you a Glenmont video about the bathroom. Can you turn it up for me? I'm going to restart for you just for a second, so you can hear the whole thing. Someone going to the, into the bathroom. Oh, oh my goodness, there's a lot of banging going on there. What, door's locked? Oh, no, looking underneath? You should never do that, that's invading their privacy. Phew, here she is. Right, let's see how she does with washing her hands. Oh, good, got some soap. And I think the water's still, what? There's no garbage can over there, and there's toilet paper coming out from underneath the stall. This is terrible. This has got to stop. Oh, you cannot peek over that, that's not respectful either. You didn't wash your hands or turn off the water. Let's see what happens this time in the bathroom. Oh, here she comes. Oh, nice, just a short knock. Oh, waiting very respectfully-ish for someone in the bathroom, giving them their privacy, just what they need. Oh, friendly hello. Let's see how she's doing washing her hands. Great, soap, water. Here comes the paper towels. Will she know what to do with them? She does, right in the garbage can. Oh, and I believe, I probably heard some flushing going out in there, that's also excellent. More hand washing, water, soap, and some more paper towels. Let's hope this one also knows where it goes. Perfect. See, we can be kind, respectful, and responsible in the bathroom. We need to be kind, respectful. So as you can imagine, this was fun for faculty as well as for students. And they all did a really great job. Doing a bad job again, here we go. They all did a really great job teaching these expectations. And the good thing is, these are videos which can be shown again. So if your class is struggling with behavior in the bathroom, then you can replay this video and sit down and reteach the expectations. So here are some pictures of them rolling out what RTI for behaviors should look like in the classroom. They talked about how you go down the slide at recess. We covered everything, and I think everyone had a good time doing it. We did, we talked to everyone, there's our PE teacher helping out, teaching, at least everybody in the whole building. And I'm going to turn it over to Kristin.
Hi, good evening. I have the pleasure of working with our five elementary counselors in creating curriculum to teach positive behaviors, not only in the classroom, but also in the hallway, on the playground, in the cafeteria, so on and so forth. So over the course of a year, our counselors have taken the time to really develop lessons that are age-appropriate. So for instance, at the primary level, particularly in kindergarten, our counselors will spend about six lessons teaching the Zones of Regulation, which is a program to talk to students about their emotions. What are they feeling? How do they handle the emotion? And then what do they do with that once they feel it? We also discussed friendship skills, conflict resolution. And again, as each grade progresses, the counselors are really finding ways to tweak their lessons. So for instance, last week I just went and observed in the 4th grade class over at Eagle, one of our counselors went in and used Jeopardy. And so the students were, it was basically a refresher on what the skills that they were taught last year. So they're having a lot of fun with it. The students are remembering it, because with the Zones of Regulation, it's all about what zone are you in? And it identifies a color with that emotion. And I'll show you a poster in the next slide. Calming caddies was something new this year. And so the district supported the notion of having these calming caddies, which is essentially a set of tools and strategies that students can use in the classroom. Whereas before, they would go to the counselor's office to use, you know, maybe a sensory ball or putty, or they would use a weighted blanket. Now, the counselors have created these calming caddies. And in those calming caddies are breathing cards, which are taught in classroom lessons. They also use a few manipulatives, they're not toys. And so that's something that we also have to teach the students, is that they're there when they need a moment to either decompress or de-escalate when they're starting to feel an emotion that maybe they shouldn't be feeling at that time. So that's something that every classroom has at the elementary level. And when the students go to specials, they take the calming caddies with them so that they have them at the specials with them. In terms of group work, our counselors are also identifying students based on certain topics and are pulling students out based on those topics. So for instance, you can see social skills, anger management, anxiety, leadership. So depending on the need of that particular grade level or that particular class, the counselor will work with the teacher, identify those students, and then pull the students out to teach or reteach some skills that are necessary. So the Zones of Regulation, what zone are you in? Again, the district was, we're very fortunate, the district was supportive of producing posters of what zone are you in, in all of the elementary buildings. So we have them in the hallways, we have them in the counseling office, we actually have them by the libraries. No matter where you go, you're going to see these posters. And it's just another friendly reminder for the students to identify that emotion and then work on that strategy if they're having a tough time. Problem solving. So when we talk about conflict resolution, the district has always used the solution circle. Actually, this is, the poster to the left is an older version that our art students had created years and years ago. And so we're still using this at the elementary level to teach students, you know, multiple ways of handling any sort of conflict. This past year, we purchased Kelso's Choice, which is the poster to the right. Again, it's another wheel, as you can see, to help students resolve conflict. There is a curriculum that goes along with it, and it's something that we're piloting this year. Common language scripts. So this is something that, the conversation started last year about what scripts we should be using consistently amongst the five buildings. And these are some of the scripts that everyone agreed upon. And so, you know, when a student is maybe struggling with a particular issue in class, a teacher can say, "Big deal or little deal," and they can work through that together. So these are just a few of the examples that we're using. We are actually now starting to move this forward into the middle school. So it'll be really interesting, because the middle school's starting with the scripts this year. And our students who have practiced these at the elementary level will then know how to use them at the middle school, and our faculty will be ready to work with the students there. So we're moving forward and keeping communication open between elementary and middle school with those. The voice levels, again, is something that we're using at the elementary level. And to be consistent, as you can see, they are color-coded. And so students are encouraged to use the proper voice level depending on location in the building. It's something that they're really starting to utilize. And so if you were to walk into some of our cafeterias at the elementary buildings, you could actually see the voice level on the wall. And they're trying to encourage students and reteach them what's appropriate in certain locations. Glenmont Golds.
So the positive is really the theme, and that's something that's very motivating to children, rather than focusing on the negative, focus on the positive. So we have Glenmont Gold Awards, which I think some of the students in our audience, Sarah, maybe you remember, whenever we catch a student being good or doing something extra, whatever the teacher or adult in the building identifies as a positive thing, they can give the child a Glenmont Gold Award, which is one of these slips of paper. The children really covet these and appreciate them, and they collect them. On Thursday mornings, we make an announcement to have the messenger from each classroom bring them to the office. We have a bin for each grade level, so the messenger puts them all in the bin, and we pull a name from each grade level. And the next morning, we announce our Glenmont Gold winners for the week. And they get a special prize, they have their names announced on the announcements in the morning, of course. And their first name goes up on the website. So it's a very exciting thing, and the children really appreciate winning their Glenmont Golds. And they're, you know, being acknowledged for their positive behavior.
One of the last diagrams that we wanted to show you was one that we use with RTI for academics. And this is a visual that we are using during our data meetings. So Laurel and I travel to all the elementary schools four times a year, and we hold data meetings with the RTI staff, our school psychologist, social worker, counselor, and building principal, and have discussions about the response to intervention, not only for academics, but also for behavior. So the triangle that we use for academics is very similar to the triangle we use for behaviors. And we're having discussions in how counselors, social workers, psychologists can intervene when there is a behavior issue that has been presented, and how they can respond to those Tier 2 and Tier 3 behaviors. Coordinated care teams. This was a model that we wanted to support moving forward from last year. We've got, you know, five elementary counselors who are busy teaching lessons, running groups, seeing students for, you know, individual counseling sessions, also helping teachers with behavior plans. With the coordinated care team, we also decided to move a social worker into every building. So we have seven social workers in the district. Each one is assigned to one of our seven buildings, along with the school psychologist. We do have some folks that are traveling here and there for various reasons. But what we wanted to do was form a team, a collaborative team model, where folks are communicating daily, multiple times a day, depending on what behaviors are happening in the building, to come up with a consistent plan for that student, for the teacher, and for the family. And so our coordinated care teams are working together and are meeting regularly to have these discussions, not only with the teacher, but also with building administration to best support the student.
We also like to collect data. We don't want to just rely, well, this is what we think is happening. We want to actually see that we're using data to guide our program. So teachers are constantly collecting data, both in paper form and electronically. Principals are now putting data into Aspen. School attendance teams are meeting regularly. My guidance counselor, social worker, or nurse and myself meet regularly to discuss attendance and children who have been out too frequently so that we can try to support those families. We have our coordinated care teams, as Kristin had just said, and they meet at least weekly, often daily, to discuss children and their specific needs and the data that we have. And then our data team meetings, which have been a huge success, I think, and we're still tweaking them, but it's been great to get together and look at the whole child, not just their academics, but also their behavior with all of the players so that we can provide the best support and best program that we can for every child. Looking ahead, so where do we see this going? It's new here this year for Tier 1, and we're very pleased with it. But of course, we can always have improvements. So we're hoping to develop, continue to develop new programs and supports for each tier level, for the whole school Tier 1, for those children who need a little more extra support for Tier 2, and then the most challenging children. We're also looking for other ways to simplify data collection and to analyze the data. We're always reflecting on our data team meeting process. In fact, we've had two data team meetings, and each time, we got together and talked about how it went. And these lovely ladies here just got together and revamped it and made it even better. So we're really excited about that. And we want to provide additional positive support. So here is something that our coordinated care team at Glenmont is going to be doing in the spring, is to have a good character award, similar to what the middle school does with a breakfast, to recognize those students who are always good. Because we don't want to focus on the bad, we want to focus on the good and really recognize those children who are doing everything that they can. And that is RTI behavior in our Bethlehem Elementary Schools. Are there any questions? Yes?
Yeah, I have, first of all, thank you. I have a few. And just so you know, so I'm going through these, like, I have questions in many different ways. Like, I have questions as a school board member, I have questions as a parent, and I also have questions as I'm a teacher, so I'm kind of curious about some of the things as well. As a parent, I can tell you, it is getting through, because we use the Zones at home. I've got a kindergartner and a 2nd grader, and we talk about, if they're acting a lot of control, we tell them they're in the yellow zone. When it's bedtime, oh, it looks like you're in the blue zone, probably time to go to bed, you know. So this stuff, this stuff is going through. In addition, as a teacher, you know, we use big deal, little deal with my kids, and I've actually incorporated it where I teach, you know, because I think it's something that kids get. So like, this stuff is being communicated, and it's good. My questions. I have a question in terms of like, time, from like, when we get data feedback to a result. So say, for example, first week of school, there's a kindergartner, or say there is a 3rd grader who's new to district, and the teacher walks in, and at the end of the first day, they're like, "Oh, my God, oh, my God, what do I do?" And what is their, what's their next step in terms of working with the team? Like, how would they do this?
Yeah, we have this every year in all of our elementary schools. Kindergarten, also new students, or students who've changed over the summer for whatever reason. And, you know, our coordinated care team this year has been especially successful with that here at Glenmont. And our guidance counselors immediately there to provide supports, to come up with some kind of a behavior plan on the fly, to do whatever they can to help support the teacher and the student, communicate to the parents immediately as well. So, you know, it's not perfect, but it's certainly, there's people now, I feel like we have greater supports because we have the coordinated care team, so there can be quicker responses in that respect.
Yeah, because that was just one of my questions about RTIs. The RTI is the tiered program for academics or behaviors is a useful program, but it's just, how fast can we implement? How fast can we get those things out in from, you know, boy, let's talk about the student and gather some data. But by the time we have data, it's November, and the teacher is now bald because they have torn all their hair out.
It depends on severity of the behaviors. Obviously, if we have a child who's out of control, we are going to react immediately. We go right to Tier 3.
And by the bald comment, I didn't mean me, but maybe. Another question, this is a question I'm asking kind of as a teacher and as a school board member. There are students out there, because a lot of it's based on positivity, but there are students out there, whether it be due to a disability or just their difficult upbringing, they, accepting positive feedback is a struggle. Like, you sit there and you say, "Nice job," and then they look at you like you just, you know, said something in Chinese, you know, it doesn't compute. Like, do you struggle with that at all?
Yes, and there's some children, actually, we've learned that we don't say that positive behavior in that respect. We might do it in a different way, because sometimes calling attention to the child makes them feel uncomfortable and can promote negative behaviors. So we have to be creative and look at the child and see how, you know, what would be best for that individual child. And, you know, I haven't even talked about the teacher's role in this, but our teachers are so skilled in their behavior management. And perhaps I didn't include them in the slides, and I wish that we had perhaps more, because they're excellent at this, and we're just there to support them and do everything we can. But I would say our teachers are very adept at handling children like that.
Yeah, because it's just a struggle. Yeah, because it's just a struggle that I know I have and other teachers have where it's, you want to say good things to these kids, but they don't know how to receive it, they don't know how to process it. And so, you actually, like, you call a kid over at the end of the day and want to say, "Good job," but all he's been ever called over for in his six years of life is to be yelled at, so he's already coming over expecting to be yelled at and it makes a situation, you're trying to make a situation, a positive situation, but you made it a negative one.
Right, so you might call and leave a voicemail for the parents, so the child might hear it that way. You might slip them a note so that they can read it at home. Again, teachers are very adept at coming up with these kinds of creative ways to promote the positive in ways that all children can accept it.
All right, and one, sorry, sorry, one last question. This, just a sticky one that I've been questioning. When it comes to the RTI, like, how do you balance, like, the needs of the behavior of the one child versus the needs of the whole class? Because we live in the world of least restrictive environment and every kid deserves a quality education. But, like, how do you, when you guys have your meetings, how do you discuss that and balance that and say, "Boy, we have Billy here who is, you know, really needs our help and we're going to pour our time into him." But then you have 19 other kids who are like, "Wow, we just spent an hour on Billy," you know, "and I was supposed to read, but I didn't get to read today."
So, we know that that can be a problem and part of that is Kristen and I leading the meetings along with the principals because we're going to keep the ball rolling. We talk about every single student. So, we don't only talk about those who are having issues, we touch base on everyone. And it's been very helpful for my RTI for academics teachers as well because a lot of times, the kids have gaps in their learning because of a behavior that they're exhibiting in the classroom and they're just not attending and they're having trouble. So, now, we're talking about it all together. If we end up with a student who we need to have an hour meeting about, then we table that and we call a behavior meeting. So, we are not spending a great deal of time in these data meetings talking about one student. And then, when it comes to the classroom, every classroom has a behavior management plan that's for every child in the classroom. And then, there are certain students who need to go to tier-two, which would be having them on their individual behavior plan. So, it could be as much as giving a thumbs up or a thumbs down or a thumb sideways to a kiddo to give feedback to them and collecting data on how well they respond to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Kristen?
Yeah, you can go, Kristen.
Okay.
I saw you.
On the slide about coordinated care teams, where you have one school counselor, social worker, and psychologist in each of the elementary buildings, my understanding is we also have the same, one of each, at the middle school and high school. So, to me, there's, there seems to be a disconnect because we have five of each for the entire elementary school group, but when that group moves to the middle school, we have one each. So, it's like you are serving 20% of the population in middle school and 20% of the population in high school, but we're not serving everyone. There seems to be a disconnect in how we're allocating our resources and I think, at least from my experience, middle school and certainly in high school are times where you have different kinds of problems, but you still have perhaps the same number of issues coming up. Different, but how do you handle that large number with such a small group of resources?
So, it's a great question. We have one of each in the, at the elementary level. So, for the purpose of this presentation, we wanted to mention that that's new because our school psychologists and social workers were traveling between buildings.
And it's wonderful you do. Believe me, I'm a big supporter of it.
Yes, and it's working. It's been very successful so far this year. At the middle school, we have four school counselors. So, we don't have one, we have four. At the high school, we have eight. One of those folks is a student assistance counselor who's a licensed mental health clinician, along with a school psychologist and a social worker. So, we are meeting the needs based on caseload numbers of the students and then also when a crisis does occur, depending on the type of behavior that is presented, we have folks who will respond and have essentially like a safety response team, like a crisis response team, who will respond to that particular student and behavior when necessary. So, we have more resources at the middle and high school in the form of school counselors.
Jonathan, also with the psychologists, they do travel to do evaluations, so they're not just, for example, the psychologist just at Elsmere is not just doing evaluations at Elsmere because there's not, there's not enough of them to keep it equitable so that one psychologist isn't inundated with 20 evaluations and the others have none. So, Heather Quinn, who oversees the psychologists, is making sure that that's balanced. So, it does require psychologists to move between buildings for evaluations.
Is that also similar for social workers?
Social workers, not so much. Nope, they have a mandated caseload and then they also have a non-mandated caseload, which is by referral from the school counselors. So, depending on the needs of that student and family, would they then be referred to the social worker?
And how many social workers do you have at the middle school and high school?
So, currently, we have one at the high school and we have 1.2 at the middle school.
And that's enough to handle the caseload?
We're working on it. It's a work in progress.
We're evaluating it.
Okay.
But also, the school counselors are doing more than they used to three years ago. Like, their responsibilities have been redefined from prior years, so...
Absolutely, absolutely.
We changed the structure, if you remember. The middle school counselors have always done a lot of counseling, but the high school, if you recall, Kristen changed, so we have two ninth-grade counselors.
To help with the transition.
They do a lot of the counseling with the ninth graders because of, we're concerned with the transition to ninth grade. So, many of the ninth graders are seeing them for counseling, they're not necessarily seeing a social worker psychologist.
Could we get a follow-up on this when you have the social worker issue worked out a little more?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just, I have a couple of questions. With the RTI, you indicated you do the four data meetings a year, but do you do regular weekly meetings with the teachers and staff? Like, how does that work so it's an ongoing process at the elementary level?
So, four times a year, we talk about everybody. If there is someone that needs an extensive conversation, that gets put on a list, which would be, which is like once a week kind of thing. And then, all of the supports provided for the student, let's say it's academic and behavioral, they're meeting constantly. So, the coordinated care team is always meeting with the classroom teachers as well. And then, the, you know, every person who touches that child will know what's happening and know what the plan is. So, it's not just four times a year, it's...
No, I know, it's much more than that. I was just wondering, how often do you come to the buildings to talk with the coordinated care team?
Oh, that's a good question. So, we, Kristen comes more because that's her team. I kind of have a few other roles that I play in between. So, I don't come back for those conversations, but I answer questions all the time. So, if people want to move between tiers, so behaviorally, you can move between tiers a lot. You can start off having a great year, having, following all the classroom rules, and then something happens and a student is really struggling. And now, they won't do any work and they're rolling on the carpet. And so, that student would automatically be moved to a tier-two and then a tier-three if they need to. And what that means is we're just giving them extra support. So, maybe they meet with a guidance counselor once a week or twice a week, or maybe we touch base during lunch or make sure they have somebody to eat with. We try and come up with the underlying reason for the behavioral change and then address that.
Okay.
I would say our building principal really takes the lead because they're the ones who manage the building and they know the students best as well as the teachers do. So, I think it's our building principals are leading these team meetings weekly when necessary so that communication's always clear and everyone's on the same page.
Okay. How do you, how, this wasn't the presentation for this evening, but for the transition on behaviors to the middle school. So, you have a plan here, how does that transfer over once they go to sixth grade?
So, we're working on it.
Okay, I like to, I like to hear that.
Yes. So, I, along with Kelly Brock, have trained all faculty and staff at the middle school on how to use the scripts. So, that was the first step that their behavior team wanted to do for their whole building because it's something that everybody can do and it's understandable. And they're rolling out one script at a time. So, the first one they're doing is, "What's your plan?" So, if you see a kiddo walking through the hall and you don't know where they're supposed to go, sometimes, if I was an aide in the building or if I worked in the kitchen, I might not say anything to them, but now I know I can say, "What's your plan?" And the kids get used to that and know how to answer. If they do not have a plan, that raises a red flag for you. If they know where they're going, they just tell you and move on with your day. So, the behavior, RTI for behaviors is starting in the planning mode at middle school and we're slowly rolling out, but keeping in line with what happened at the elementary school, so there's not a huge transition or difference for children as they move from their building to the middle school.
So, right now, is their plan, I know it's relatively new, so I understand that. If there's a plan at the end of this year for fifth graders, let's say you have 20 fifth graders on a behavioral and they're involved with the coordinated care teams and they might not have an IP or a 504 plan, it's just a care team program. Will you send that data over so that their team knows ahead of time?
Yes.
So, you're not starting from ground zero, I guess?
Yes, so what our counselors will do is they always come down and do a fifth grade presentation and then the students always come to the middle school for a tour and so there's one piece of that. But in terms of conversations, our counselors will go and meet not only with the teachers but also with the providers. So, they'll meet with the counseling staff, the social workers, so that we have flagged all students that need additional support more than what we've been able to give, you know, for your regular gen ed student who maybe needs, you know, their own individual plan to start the school year or transition. So, those conversations will take place in the spring. We have, our last meeting is in May. And so, we plan as the coordinated care group to meet at the end of May so that those conversations can happen. And then, I know you came to the middle school for a visit and saw a data team meeting, just a quick snapshot, and then our middle school counselors are starting to implement second step, which is a social-emotional curriculum, which then will tie in some of the language that the students have used at the elementary level into the middle school level. So, it's a work in progress.
Okay, and then I have one last question and then I'm done. Do we, with the Glenmont Golds, I've been here and so my kids have received some of them, do we find opportunities to kids who don't do good deeds to kind of, I know that sounds really weird, but kids who are shy and quiet, maybe they don't raise their hand, maybe they don't go get you something to be nice, they just, they are, you know, they're just who they are and they're just going about their day. A lot of times, some of these students need the opportunity to get a Glenmont Gold so that it can draw out a different behavior. So, I'm just wondering, like, do you address that? Because there are a lot of people that fall under that bucket.
Oh, absolutely. And the beauty of the Glenmont Gold program is it's very flexible and every teacher does it differently. Some teachers give out Glenmont Golds like they're going out of style, other teachers have them for very, have very high expectations and give them out frugally. So, it really can be adapted however we want to do it. And we're also, like I said, we're looking for other programs and other ways to support the kids who are always doing the right thing. So, that's why we wanted to start that character breakfast. So, our coordinated care team is working on that. And it's to identify those kids who we know are always making the right choices and they might not be out there being the flashy ones, but we want to make sure that they are recognized. So, we absolutely are looking for ways to recognize those kinds of kids.
But even if they're not behavioral issues that do the right thing, maybe they just, like, waste time or they're the ones that ask, like, stupid questions all day long.
Teachers are always trying to find the child doing the right thing. So, part of behavior plans are often, you know, the child's doing a negative behavior, doing a negative behavior, as soon as the teacher catches them doing the positive behavior, you give them a Glenmont Gold. It's, you know, it's, yeah, reinforce the positive behavior.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm sorry, I do have a question. I know you probably feel like you're being interrogated. I'm such a huge proponent of this program, I was really excited to see the presentation. I have a son who comes home and repeats some of these things on a daily basis and we have a breathing card with a magnet on the fridge. So, thank you for all the work that you do. I just had two questions. One was, there was a reference to a small group program for kids who exhibit anxiety and need stress management. Can you talk about how children are identified for that?
Sure. So, through the data meetings, we had our first data meeting in October, it was the beginning of, oh, it was the end of September, early October. So, students were just coming to school, teachers were just starting to get to know their students, but you may have a student who's really struggling and is crying every day, you know, they're anxious. And so, we were able to identify those students and the school counselor met with the teacher, maybe went and did a classroom observation, met with the student, just to kind of get a sense of where they're at and then said, "You know what, I could really form a group with the following students to work on some, you know, deep breathing mindfulness with these students so that they walk into the building and aren't so upset coming off the bus and can get to their classroom safely and start their day." So, it's just a short-term solution to help, could be a long-term problem and students could stay in those groups for the year with a different focus, maybe after the first couple of months. But when the counselors are told that there is a need, they will respond by either providing short-term individual counseling or group counseling. And we would consider that a tier-two intervention and then would meet with the teacher, communicate with the parent to make sure, "Are you seeing any progress? Because if you're not, then let's continue." Social Skills and Banana Splits are groups that the school counselors have a set curriculum for, so those stay throughout the year. Change in Family, things of that nature, they will always run groups for that. But something specific for, you know, conflict resolution, anger management, anxiety is really a conversation between the teacher, the counselor, usually the nurse and building administrator say, "There's a need and we need to respond."
Thank you. So, then, my second question is about parents, who I don't see mentioned anywhere in the presentation. And maybe that's because we're focused on the school setting, which is, you know, what you were asked to present, so that's fine. But I'm wondering if you could talk about parent participation, both how parents are notified that their child's been identified, if they are notified, which I assume they are, and what role they play as part of the coordinated care team.
Sure, so anytime a child would be receiving a tier-two support, a parent would be notified, whether it's academic or behavior. Joanne Honeywell is our school counselor, she sends home, she usually calls them first and then sends home a forms, the parent signs off so the parent knows what their child is doing. We never do anything without, with kids without the parent's knowledge, especially at the elementary level. I really try to notify parents too about our whole program. At the beginning of the year, I sent home a lot of information, I sent home all the scripts, so parents would have those at home, I sent home the voice level chart, I sent home a description of all of the different aspects of this program. I'll probably be doing an update soon too and we're going to be doing some refreshing training with the kids too. So, in January, we're going to be looking more at that too. So, you know, every, anytime that we can let parents know more about this, we really try to do so.
We also, one thing to add is, the flip side is, parents can often, or will often, contact a teacher about concerns they have and the teacher will convey that at a data team meeting or go to the principal, for example, if you're concerned about, "My child seems very anxious." Oftentimes, we hear from parents and they're looking for some help, so that works both ways.
Absolutely, and actually, the teacher's the first line of communication with parents at the elementary level. Parents are always contacting the teacher, the teacher's contacting the parent, there's a lot of communication at the elementary level with the classroom teachers.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is recognition of visitors on an agenda item. If you'd like to address the board on an agenda item, please come up to the microphone and state your name. No? Next up is finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one through four.
Second?
There are actually five.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, there are. So, we'll take up finance action items one through five. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
The proposed meal price adjustment, can we get an explanation? Is that just because of the cost, the increase in the cost of... Is that just because of the cost, the increase in the cost of goods sold, so to speak?
Lisa, where's Lisa? Lisa's here tonight. She anticipated your question.
Thank you.
So yes, we, there would be some questions. We haven't had a price increase since 2010, so it's been a while. Also, the high school meal is vastly different than the middle school meal, yet they're the same price. And we want to add value, continue to add value to the high school program, as well as all of our programs. But that, it's a 25 cent increase, which I think has probably been needed for a while. So, and it's still an incredible value that we're offering to students and faculty. So, yeah.
So it, it's basically based because we haven't had one prices of going up.
Yes. And we need to keep up pace with that.
Do you anticipate this is something that we'll be seeing on a regular basis or we should see? Maybe not as much, or?
I mean, you should see price increases if product is, prices are increasing every five or 10 years, depending on, to keep the product still the quality that you want to be serving to students. So, yeah, every so often you have to do this. The last price increase that we did in 2010 was a dollar price increase, it was quite large. So when you get into that kind of a situation, you're not doing an incremental price increase, you're doing something that's more going to impact the, impact the sales numbers and the ability of your community to pay for, for meals.
So going forward, you're looking to do more small incrementals?
Definitely.
Thank you.
What's the price of it? What's it go from again?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's three twenty-five at, at three dollar for a meal at the elementary school, three twenty-five for middle and high. High school with, with the increase would be three fifty.
Thank you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 10.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
I'm going to abstain because my wife is listed. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through six.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through two.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next, we will recognize visitors on a non-agenda item. If you'd like to address the board, please come to the microphone and state your name.
Hello, my name is Marietta Angelotti. I'm a graduate of Bethlehem and the parent of a child in the middle school. I'm a family physician, a member of the American Academy of Family Physicians, and a former medical director in healthcare policy at the New York State Department of Health. I'm here to add my voice to the chorus of voices encouraging the board to move ahead with a start-school-later policy change for the high school. I don't know where you are with that right now. I know there was some discussion of a committee and I, I don't think parents have been informed of what the status is right now. So as a parent, I'm coming here to show my support for that. There's a lot of us in the community support this very strongly. This policy change would start school for the high school at 8:30 a.m. in recognition of the specific circadian rhythm and sleep needs of adolescents. We know that there are many positive effects of eight-plus hours of sleep in our teens. Grades and test scores go up, graduation and college enrollment rates go up. Athletic performance has improved due to improved reaction times by fifteen to twenty percent. We also know that athletic injuries go down by sixty-seven percent. Car accidents go down by seventy percent. Lateness and tardiness go down by fifteen to twenty percent. Depression is down significantly. Caffeine and stimulant use is down. Alcohol, marijuana, and illicit drug use is down. Risky sexual behavior is down, risk-taking behavior is down. Suicidal thinking and attempts are down by eleven to twenty percent. Absences are down by fifteen to twenty percent. Fighting in school is down and the number of students under treatment for ADD goes down. Starting school later has now been endorsed by every major medical organization in the United States, including the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, the American Academy of Sleep Medicine, the Society of Behavioral Medicine, the National Sleep Foundation, the American Thoracic Society, the National Association of School Nurses, the Society of Pediatric Nurses, and the National Education Association and the National Parent Teacher Association. There is no question that this change, like all change, will be met with some resistance and that there are many challenges to overcome. It will take board commitment and school administration leadership, which can only be based on the courage of individuals, each of you individually. I hope each of you will step forward to prioritize the health of our students. I urge you to immediately take concrete steps to make starting high school at 8:30 a.m. a reality in this district in a planful way that respects competing priorities and the needs of all of our students and families. And I encourage you, if you want to learn more, to go to startschoollater.net, which has a lot of the research studies I've referred to, toolkits and lots of case story, case histories of other schools and districts who have gone through this process and been able to overcome a lot of the challenges. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Sheila Maloney. I'm a senior at Bethlehem High School. That's Sarah Marshall, she's also a senior at Bethlehem High School. First, I just wanted to say that my super project this year is actually about changing the school start times. And I can confirm that, at least for myself, I have first and second period free now, as I did the second semester of my junior year. And my grades, mental health, like, performance in every way just went up tremendously. So I do think, like, I would encourage you all to look into that and really consider it. We also wanted to talk about the school counselors. At least from my personal experience and the experience that I've shared with my friends, is that I don't feel there's enough, like, there's enough counselors for college and I feel like the counselors at the high school are dedicated to college because they have so much work and so much to do for getting kids into college and they do a phenomenal job. But when it comes to outside of college and talking about home life or life in general, there's different things that I thought the counselors were for in elementary school and middle school. I feel like there's a really big lack of that at the high school. I know when I was in elementary school and middle school, if we felt we had a really big or bad problem, we could go to our counselors. And I know at the high school, that's kind of dropped off and it's because we only view our counselors as there for high school. So like, one of my friends was going through something really hard and I said, oh, like, I really think you need to talk to someone professionally. And they didn't feel like it could go to their parents to get a professional counselor. So I was like, oh, go to the school counselors. And they're like, can they do that? Like, I thought they were just for college. So I think that's, at least what I've noticed, there's a really big gap. It like is wonderful from elementary school and middle school, when you get to college, it's about school. And I think, I would hope that counselors are there for more than that. Thank you.
I agree. I personally love my counselor, I have Dr. Carr, she's great. But if I do come in for something that's not related to school, I'm usually just sent to the mindfulness room to sit there. And like, sometimes it helps, but it's just kind of like, hey, instead of helping me with what's going on, they just kind of go and send me to sit in a room, which isn't always very helpful. And if I'm sent to the social worker, I'm not usually really given any help. They, like, last time I went, they were just like, you should exercise more to help. And that was all I was given and I was sent back to class. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Before we go on, this raises two issues. One is my concern about the services that we have at the high school as far as the social worker, the counselors that are available and what they're available for. And I think that's something that as a board, we should look into. And the second is the issue of the start time. And I know that there have been some discussions. I know that the Strategic Planning Committee had addressed it in some way. But I only attended one meeting, so I don't know what was said. I do know that if Seattle School District, among others, can do this, it's something that I think we can do. And given all of the data that's available, and I've started reading, I've read quite a number of the studies, I think it's something we really need to take a serious look at. Because as both students that spoke today and rather eloquently said, this is something that's very important. I think it would have helped my children when they were going through. I know that my daughter has rescheduled her college classes so that she starts later in the day because it's not, this is not something that just affects teens. This is something that affects young adults as well. So I would urge my fellow board members and the administration to look at this again and let's find a way to make it happen.
We have a committee, the School Start Time Committee, in place.
I know, but we've, with all due respect, Jody, and, and I love the fact we have a committee, I'd like to see it move a little faster. And I'm not saying to do it recklessly. That's not the goal at all. And I know we have to be respectful of the different priorities. And I know that, for example, it will likely affect lab school because of the internships. It'll affect sports because we need to get other school districts to match up schedules with. I know it's not easy. But perhaps we could take a multi-targeted approach so that we have one group looking at how do we work on busing? Another group, how do we work on sports? Another group on, how do we work on the different, each of the different aspects that it will take to get this going? Rather than having a single committee try to attack the whole thing.
So at our, our last meeting, that's what I had proposed, is that we break up into subgroups in the discussion where, in all kinds of different directions from that. But that is what I had proposed we do.
Well, I'll, I'll come next time and support you, okay?
And we decided, since we were doing the student health survey,
Climate survey.
Or climate, sorry, I'm sorry. Was that we wanted to look at the results from that before we have another discussion about how we move forward.
But looking at that, I didn't see any questions that I thought directly related to the start time issue.
No, they, they weren't targeted, they, they were about school climate. They were about, do kids feel safe at school? Do they feel connected at school? What, how do their, what's their general feelings about school? Because we were also looking at the academic data, some of the co-curricular data is part of this whole process. So that's why we said, let's hold off until we get this information.
When are we going to have the results of the, that survey?
Well, the survey closes this week, so after, I don't know if we'll have it all compiled by the January second meeting or it'll be the second one, but by the second meeting in January, we should have it all together. We have a lot of responses from, it was for staff, kids, and families. So we have a good number of responses.
Thank you.
Yeah?
I have a couple things too. I'm probably the outlier on the start-school-later party and I apologize for that. But I still see having three kids who've gone through the school, that mandating a lunchtime to have lunch and leaving a lot of the anxiety that exists in our school because of the academic pressures and the peer pressures to compete with their peers is a lot of our school, our personal school issue that is different and unique from some different other schools just based on our cohort of students. So, to me, I would support that change in a healthier eating lifestyle before I worry about the hour extra they're going to get in the morning. I, I think these kids go off to college and then they have plenty of time to eat a healthy meal. They're not eating snacks all day long because they don't want to eat a sandwich when they, when they get to high school. So, I'm just, I'm just putting my viewpoint on there that I think there are stronger issues that our district has based on being involved with the kids that I have been involved with, not just my own, for as many years as I have. And I have students talk to me all the time about the stresses that are inherent in our school district. And starting school later has never been one of them. Maybe we've had a few students come to the school board meetings and talk about it, but it hasn't been like on the forefront of their issues. But that's just my, my personal view as a board member. It's not the popular view, but I think lunch would be my first start on helping our students at the high school level anyway. And I also wanted to thank the two students for speaking. But I do want to say one thing, just on behalf of our teachers here, there, there is a two-sided perspective and it's important to realize, I, I love you, Sarah. But, you know, I don't want everybody to, to, you know, take away the, the negative because there's a lot of good things that our counselors do and I just want to make sure that that, everybody's aware of that as well. And I know that you know that too, so.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board?
So, my name is Daniel Lozano. I'm a senior from the Bethlehem, the Bethlehem Lab School Program. And this was brought up in the topics of discussion, like, just a couple minutes ago, about increasing the school lunches for the year. And I just kind of want to put my input on it. So, for a lot of students, it can be very hard to like afford lunch and especially, I think increasing the price can be troubling for a lot of students. So I just like kind of quickly like did the math. So for like a full year, if you bought a lunch every day, just like a plain regular lunch with like either a carton of milk or water, it costs like around like eight hundred and sixty dollars for a full year. And usually a lot of students get like, either like a Snapple or like something else. So that's like around two or three dollars they could add on, so that'd be like close to a thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. So, I think it's important to take account, not only people who can afford this, but also people who can't. Because of course you can get like one free lunch throughout this whole school year, most of the time. But for some people who can't afford this, it can be very hard for them to have lunch every day. And, yeah, that's all.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right, our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, January 2nd at Eagle Elementary. Seven o'clock meeting with a six o'clock anticipated executive session. Following that will be Monday, January 14th. Doesn't seem right.
Pause. Oh, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. So that'll be the audit committee and the policy committee meetings. I'll have to get that on my calendar. Wednesday, January 16th will be the next board meeting at Slingerlands Elementary. Seven o'clock board meeting, six o'clock executive session. And then there will be a board retreat on Wednesday, January 30th at 5:30 p.m. There's no reason for us to go back into executive session. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy holiday and enjoy your vacations. Can I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Big students, come on up.